From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good afternoon and welcome to the PM session, 2:00 PM session of the regular Tuesday, February 13, 2024, meeting of the Board of Supervisors, Board to reconvene. First item is roll call.
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Scribner?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here.
Thank you. The next item is a report on actions taken in closed session. And I have an announcement to make in that regard today in closed session regarding item number 23 of this morning's agenda. I am pleased to report by a unanimous 5-0 vote, the Board of Supervisors appointed Elsa Martinez as the county's interim chief administrative officer effective March 9, 2024. Go ahead, I hear some cheering in the air. Ms. Martinez currently serves as the county's chief financial officer and has led our budget and finance division for the past 12 years. During her time as the county's budget guru, as she is affectionately known, she has successfully implemented best practices for budget and debt financing, guided the county's finances through the pandemic recovery, including unprecedented, unique federal and state funding streams, each with unique requirements, and was instrumental in transitioning Kern Medical to the hospital authority to pursue innovative healthcare delivery models that proactively improve the access to needed healthcare services across the community. Ms. Martinez has a bachelor's degree in business administration from CSU Bakersfield, is a certified public accountant, and has a well-earned reputation for working collaboratively with county departments, allied organizations, stakeholders, and residents for achieving the health and safety of our citizens. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare service. We hope that Ms. Martinez can contribute to the success of the county's healthcare[756.88]
From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors Meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
Good afternoon and welcome to the PM session, 2:00 PM session of the regular Tuesday, February 13, 2024, meeting of the Board of Supervisors, Board to reconvene. First item is roll call.
Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Scribner?
Here.
Supervisor Flores?
Here.
Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here.
Thank you. The next item is a report on actions taken in closed session. And I have an announcement to make in that regard today in closed session regarding item number 23 of this morning's agenda. I am pleased to report by a unanimous 5-0 vote, the Board of Supervisors appointed Elsa Martinez as the county's interim chief administrative officer effective March 9, 2024. Go ahead, I hear some cheering over there. Ms. Martinez currently serves as the county's chief financial officer and has led our budget and finance division for the past 12 years. During her time as the county's budget guru, as she is affectionately known, she has successfully implemented best practices for budget and debt financing, guided the county's finances through the pandemic recovery, including unprecedented, unique federal and state funding streams, each with unique requirements, and was instrumental in transitioning Kern Medical to the hospital authority to pursue innovative healthcare delivery models that proactively improve the access to needed healthcare services across the community. Ms. Martinez has a bachelor's degree in business administration from CSU Bakersfield, is a certified public accountant, and has a well-earned reputation for working collaboratively with county departments, allied organizations, stakeholders, and residents for achieving successful outcomes. We'd like to offer our sincere gratitude to Ms. Martinez for serving in this role and providing Kern County and the board an exceptional level of continuity and stability while the board undertakes a nationwide recruitment effort to find a permanent replacement. Ms. Martinez is with us this afternoon along with her many fans over there, apparently. And I'd like to offer her a moment to say a few words if she'd like. Elsa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I want to thank you for this opportunity to continue to serve your board and our community and the workforce in this transition period. I am committed to leading this county with dedication and integrity, and I promise you that I will uphold the values of this board and our community. I want to acknowledge the support of all department heads and employees, and especially my mentors Nancy Lawson, Brian Elsa, and Mr. Service. I am grateful for their contribution and their guidance. I look forward to collaborating with each one of you, our department heads, our community, and our employees, and drawing from our collective strength to drive positive change in this transition period. Again, I want to thank you, and I'm honored and happy to serve.
Don't go away. Thank you. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you so much, Chairman. First and foremost, I want to thank my colleagues, and I want to praise them for advancing another incredibly qualified, brilliant, amazing woman. I know that that's not why they selected you, and I don't think it was part of it, the thought at all. They put forward the person they believe was the absolute best, the most qualified, and is going to lead this county. And they didn't hesitate to do that in appointing you. So I want to acknowledge my colleagues for that. Because if you look at the incredible list of amazing, righteous, brilliant women, and I'm going to take a moment to name them, our new CEO Elsa, of course, Lorelei Oviot, our planning director, Margot Raison, our brilliant county council, my boss Kathy Kraus, our beloved clerk, Bryn Kerrigan at Public Health, who is just, doesn't slow down and just, is just so incredible, and of course Cindy Zimmer, our DA. You are added to an illustrious list of remarkable public servants who happen to be women. I like to see that. I think this county likes to see that. I think it's good for the world to see, it's good for our children to see, that in Kern County, your hard work and merit can advance you, and the people that are in charge here will acknowledge it, and they will give you the power and authority to demonstrate that you do have the goods that we all believe that you have. So this is a very special moment in Kern County. I love what you said about leading in a transition time. The only constant we know in life is change. It is constantly changing, things are constantly changing. You know, none of us are happy to see Mr. Service go, but as I told him, you know, a choice to be close to your family is 100% always the right choice, regardless of the circumstances. So, you know, we are so grateful to you, Jim, all the mentorship that you've provided for Elsa, and I'm so proud of you to acknowledge to the world and to yourself that you do have the goods. Congratulations, I look forward to seeing you in this capacity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you very much for your willingness to service Elsa. I know you'll do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's more reports, or at least one other report on actions taken in closed session. Ms. Raison?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. In addition to item 23, which you just introduced, you also met on item 22, but there is no reportable action.
Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. I'm sorry.
Forgive me. Please forgive me. I left out one, Ally Soper, who runs our communications department. And if I can just say, the most energetic, the most professional, incredible job of presenting Kern County to the world I have ever seen. My apologies, Ally. Thank you, Chairman.
The consent agenda, it's all items listed with a CA or a C above the item number considered to be routine and non-controversial by county staff. Anything with a C above it, or CA represents the Board of Supervisors' agenda, the C represents the Kern Sanitation Authority, the Fort City Taft Heights Sanitation District, or the IHSS Public Authority. We can act on those all in one motion. The consent agenda consists of items 3 through 31. 3 through 31 on the afternoon agenda. Item 10, we're going to hear separately, so that is not on the consent agenda. And on item 19, we need to change the recommended action, or actually not change it, just add to it. On item 19, where it says approve in capital letters, you need to add a semicolon and authorize auditor controller to pay. That is the recommended action. Is there anyone here that would like to make a comment on any item on the consent agenda? Other than item number 10, because we're going to hear that separately. Seeing none, return to the board for action.
Motion on consent, second.
You have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
The motion is approved, all ayes.
Ms. Thorne, we're going to get to item 10 in a moment. We're going to do 1 and 2, and then 10. So item 1 is public presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons to address the board in any matter that is not on the agenda but is under the jurisdiction of the board. You know we try to keep our comments to two minutes. Mr. Robles, and I know that Ms., you are here to, for item 1. I know Ms. Espinoza is in the back, I believe, also today, this afternoon. Welcome.
Good afternoon. Excuse me. My name is Ralph Robles, R-O-B-L-E-S. I am a veteran. And in a past meeting, Ms. Espinoza explained that her cameras were limited in capability and could not be put on the internet for the general public to observe. However, if you will take out your cellphones and look at the back of them, you will see three little lenses, and one that's almost impossible to see on the front of it is also a lens. With these three little lenses, I can have an ongoing conversation face-to-face with my family or anyone else around the world. This capability is a 24/7 capability. And if I enroll in certain services, I can attend classes, I can observe, I can conduct classes, I can observe what other people's cameras are doing simultaneously, or I can scroll through and look at them individually. If the software includes the capability to upload to the cloud, all the data on all these cameras can be stored and played back ad infinitum. Now, Ms. Espinoza explained that anyone could go to her office Monday through Friday, 8 to 5, and see what was on her security cameras. But they could not download any recordings because there was no capability. I would like to introduce you to a few technical terms. One term is expandability. You can take a basic system, and by adding software or hardware with software, called a platform, you can expand just about any system. This phone here, when it needs to be charged, I have an adapter, excuse me, adapter cable that I can plug into your wall socket, I can plug into my car, or I can plug into a portable solar charging system.
Mr. Robles?
Yes, sir.
Can I ask you to come back and fill us in on the rest of those terms that you want to familiarize us with?
I'd be happy to, sir.
I appreciate that, thank you.
The other thing is upgradability. Just by buying this unit here, I was able to upgrade it from generation four to generation five. Most systems are upgradable.
Mr. Robles?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to be more direct this time.
Oh, you will? Shut up, go away.
No, but we're a minute over our two-minute time period.
Okay, I got it.
I was trying to be polite the first time, but I-
I can take a hint. I've been thrown out of better places than this.
Please come back.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
Hey, I forgot to give my name, the last meeting I was at, but it's Paul Linfesty.
Give it twice today.
I have a confession to make. I might be part of the problem that's causing confusion on why certain races have more people voting in them than others. I don't always vote in every category on those ballots, in every race. For example, this last election, I already mailed my ballot for this primary, I didn't vote for any of the judges because honestly, I didn't have time to research them or due diligence to fill that out. And in the past, there's also a lot of races that only one person's in. Sometimes I might fill it in, sometimes I don't. It just depends on how I feel when I'm filling in the ballot. So I think that might undo some of the confusion as to why some races in a ballot might have different number of people voting in those categories than others. Two minutes and 40 seconds over? Oh, okay, thanks. I also want to say that I really liked the video that was put out. Amy Espinoza did a really good job as a presenter on that, and her team that helped edit and put that video together. Other than that, I also want to say I'm a little concerned when I hear comparisons to our country's system of voting to another country like Venezuela. We're not Venezuela. I don't think we want to be Venezuela politically. And they also do vote on touchscreens, by the way. I looked that up, and that's why they can get results so quickly. They do print out a copy of the ballot, which each person can look and see if it is correct, and then drop it into a box, which is a follow-up to it, or a paper record. But still, they're using touchscreens at the very beginning. And in the last election in November, which was an opposition primary, the Supreme Court actually suspended the count a week afterwards. So I don't want to get involved in being like Venezuela or any other country. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Linfesty. Who'll be next?
Good afternoon, I'm Eddie Lane, I'm with the Sierra Club. Being passed out is a picture of filthy conditions in the only unlocked portable toilet in Lamont Park, taken on January 26. This picture and others were sent that day to Board Chair Couch, his staff, and given obvious health concerns to Bryn Kerrigan, Kern County Health Department Director. There was no response. A follow-up email was also sent to Bryn Kerrigan on January 29, again with no response. Similar conditions were observed with pictures and reported on January 8 during a previous visit to Lamont Park. Again, there was no response. There was no toilet paper in this portable toilet, or the other one which was opened during the previous visit on January 8. These ongoing conditions would seem to violate California Health and Safety Code, Section 118500-118505, Article 1, which applies to public parks, and which includes portable toilets, which are to be, in quote, "maintained in a clean, sanitary, and serviceable condition." Again, there's been no response from the supervisor's office or from the health department. What additional steps are necessary to address this public health issue?
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Who'll be next? Seeing none. That brings us to board member announcements and reports. Seeing none, that takes us to item 10, which is contract number 24022. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I neglected to ask Ms. Espinoza if she, this is, we're back under board member announcements and reports. Would you like to, you were not able to be here this morning, there were several comments and some written documentation submitted regarding elections?
Yes, and actually, I'm supposed to be in a meeting right now that started it too, but I did want to address this morning's comments. Amy Espinoza, Kern County Auditor Controller, County Clerk, Registrar of Voters. First, I'd like to reference Mr. Robles's comments on the cameras. We do have cameras in place, they are not cellphones. As I have mentioned before, we do have observation in our office, which was the original plan. After that plan, there was a request for live streaming, and we are going to look at that. When I say we, I mean me and Information Technology Services. We're going to be working together to look for a solution to get that livestream. There are other counties who have it livestreamed. We started researching that, so we are looking towards that, again, moving forward in the November election. But for this election, we have cameras up, and we have a plan in place.
So could I interrupt you right there and ask you a question?
Yes.
Does that mean that anything that happens that's recorded after hours will, as Mr. Robles mentioned, will not be stored anywhere and won't be able to be accessed by anybody ever?
So that is the, the election cameras stored? Do you recall, Pearson?
They are.
Okay, so the election cameras are stored, so if there is an allegation of wrongdoing, then we do have that footage that can be accessed by the proper authorities.
Okay, so we'll, I will have a further conversation with you about that, but that is good to know. So people can come in and look at it during between 8 and 5? Anything after 5 and before 8:00 AM is still going to be stored?
So the hours for that is actually while our office is open, and during Canvas, we're typically open till about 8 or 9 at night. So as long as we have people in the building, observe, anyone who wants to observe those cameras is allowed to stay in our office in their designated area to observe that.
Regular hours, 8 to 5, and during a certain time period of the year, you're going to be open a little bit later, but that's-
Correct, while we're counting ballots.
Got you. Thank you.
Okay, so I would like to thank Mr. Pabich for coming to this morning's meeting and helping my office spread the word regarding what to do if you receive a ballot that does not belong to you. First, I want to clarify that when someone processes a change of address with the United States Post Office, if a ballot is sent to an old address, the USPS, the post office, never delivers it, but instead returns it directly to my office. Considering this particular ballot made its way to an incorrect address means that the voter did not process an address change with the post office. It is important for our community to know that if you receive a ballot for someone else, or for someone who is no longer at that address, you can write "not at this address" across the ballot envelope, and return it to my office by dropping it in the mailbox, walking it into the elections office, or depositing it into a designated ballot drop box. I further want to remind our community that opening another person's mail is a federal offense, and under no circumstances should they open mail that is not addressed to them specifically. Now I would like to address some of the other comments made this morning by the Kern County Voters Committee, as they call themselves. First, I'd like to begin by sharing information I found on the Federal Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Agency's website regarding foreign influence operations and disinformation. While the information is titled "foreign," I believe it applies to inaccurate statements made this morning. Misinformation is false but not created or shared with the intention of causing harm. Disinformation is deliberately created to mislead, harm, or manipulate a person, social group, organization, country, or county. Malinformation is based on fact but used out of context to mislead, harm, or manipulate. Foreign or domestic actors use misinformation, disinformation, and malinformation campaigns to cause chaos, confusion, and division. These malign actors are seeking to interfere with and undermine our democratic institutions and national cohesiveness. Some false statements made in this morning's presentation. And I quote, "Kern County's election system is completely unreliable," end quote. While there is no proof offered to substantiate this claim, the contradictory claim that, and I quote, "we are not saying Dominion is not correctly counting ballots," which was- and I quote, "we are not saying Dominion is not correctly counting ballots," which was said in the same presentation by either the first speaker or the second speaker, is actually a correct statement because Kern County's election system does correctly count each voter's ballot. Second, the Dominion, and this is a quote as well, "The Dominion vote counting system illegally shows Sacramento Election Department gives, allows, sorry, allow Sacramento Election Department the ability to calculate who wins and who loses our elections. It is done by machine counting the ballots in secret and electronically bypassing Kern's election personnel," end quote. So ballots are physically counted on-site and are never sent to the state for separate tabulation. Ballot counting is open to all observers from the day the first ballot is counted until the very last ballot is counted. Nothing is done in secret. Third, the following statements were statements, the following were statements regarding the county contract with Dominion. This is a quote. "Section 13.1 and 13.2, under confidential information, Kern County is prohibited to know the Dominion software source code and associated documents, including passwords, being confidential within Dominion's organization." I don't know if you all had an opportunity to read the exhibit that was submitted with this morning's presentation, but 13.1 states, "For purposes of this agreement, confidential information is defined as those materials, documents, data, and technical information, specifications, business information, customer information, or other information that the disclosing party maintains as trade secrets or confidential and which are disclosed to a receiving party in tangible form, conspicuously marked as confidential, or with words having similar meaning or with, or which are expressly identified in this subsection." And then it goes on to clarify confidential information includes, without limitation, Dominion software source code and associated documentation. Section 13.2, "Each party shall treat the other party's confidential information as confidential within their respective organizations." Nowhere in either one of these sections does it say that we are prohibited to know this information. The sections state that when this information is shared, we are required to maintain confidentiality of the information. It further goes on, another quote, "Section 13.4 states that both Dominion and Kern can legally defend the confidentiality of its confidential information from each other. Now you can understand why the Kern Election Department employees cannot observe how votes are being counted because they are contractually restricted." Section, section 13.4 states, "Each party shall be given the ability to defend the confidentiality of its confidential information to the maximum extent allowable under the law prior to disclosure by the other party of such confidential information." Again, nowhere does this say we defend confidentiality from each other. These are, I'm not an attorney, I can defer to counsel on this, but these are our standard terms in software agreements, any type of agreements where there's proprietary information. In order to maintain the integrity of any system, we have to keep things confidential. Next, there continues to be comments on four required items. So a quote from this morning is, "The contract has not permitted our county to have the software source code and associated documentation. Without it, the votes are being counted in secret, which results in Kern County also breaking the California Chain of Custody law for not maintaining continual control of voters' ballots," end quote. Kern County, I want to assure your board and our voters that Kern County Elections has the information and documentation needed to successfully complete and accurately report on election results. Next, and I quote, "Kern employees are not allowed the password to get into their own voting system. I want to assure everyone, if we did not have access to our voting system, we would not be able to conduct elections and we would not be able to report results." Next, and I quote, "Outsiders have the ability to hack into Kern's voting system and change the vote totals," end quote. The only evidence provided was based on research done over several months with extensive access to the voting system. There is no evidence that random, that a random voter can put a pen into a ballot marking device and change votes or the outcome of any election. Also, reference was made that my staff does not have access to training from Dominion. However, we were, we went through extensive training during our mock election, which occurred in June 2023. Our vendor does train us on the system for the things that we need to know in order to conduct a successful election. A few more comments. It was stated this morning, went back to hand counting ballots. We will not violate state law and hand count any ballots, with the exception of our state mandated, mandated 1% manual tally. And then I'd also like to clarify that the three-year contract with Dominion, this morning it was referenced that we only needed one year. However, the three-year kept a voting system in place in the event of a special election. It also allowed us to complete a mock election in 2023, and it puts, we have a voting system in place in 2025, should we have another special election. Finally, I would just like to quickly comment, and Mr. Linfesty touched on this already, but the information that was provided to your board this morning, listing out total votes cast for each of the different races, I'm not sure what, what the point of that was unless it was just to show that not everyone voted in every race. And I do want to remind all of our voters that there is no requirement for anyone to vote in every single race. Voters have the right to vote only in the races that they choose to vote in. And so we're never going to have, I would, shouldn't say never, but it shouldn't surprise us that some voters do not want to vote in all races, and therefore, our total votes cast for every single countywide race would not necessarily equal each other. So the idea that maybe there's fraud there or miscalculation is completely untrue, and I just wanted to make sure that voters know that it is their right to only vote for those races that they want to vote for. That concludes my comments, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Stay there for a second, Supervisor Flores.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a quick question. Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. Just a couple of things. Thank you for systematically addressing each of the issues raised. I know it takes a lot of time and effort and thoughtfulness, so I appreciate it. It helps me as a decision maker. Secondly, with respect to the security cameras and the live streaming, so we may not have that at the, at the Dropbox sites, but do we have the live streaming here at the Elections Division when they're counting and processing or verifying? Because I thought we were going to have live stream here.
Yes, so we, we're still working on that, but we have not started processing ballots. And so once we start processing those ballots, then we'll have that live streaming that goes out to our website.
Okay, so we'll have, we will have live streaming, and it will be at the website, and we will have it where it matters.
Yes, and vote by mail and in the ballot counting room where ballots are being processed.
Thank you. And then thirdly, I just want to say, give you my appreciation and say my thanks for taking the time here because we're in a primary election. Our office is very busy. I know you're busy, your staff is busy, and every second you're down here in the well takes you away from the primary mission. So thank you for your time and thank you for doing that because it means a lot to the public, and I know it's a, it's a tall order, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you, but also I want to, your staff this morning gave me an answer to this already, but some people may be encountering what I encountered. I returned my ballot already, maybe a week and a half ago or so, like shortly after I got it. And there's the QR code that I scanned and took me to the site that told me my ballot was in the mail to me. So explain a little bit, they explained to me, but better coming from you, that that's not going to really give any info, that feature isn't going to really give us any information until you start processing ballots, is that right?
Correct, and that's also a state system
I understand.
That sends out those notifications, and, and you're correct, we've not started processing ballots. Once we start processing those and they start going, making their way through the sorter and signatures are accepted, then the public can expect notifications that their ballot is being processed.
Do you have approximate time on when you're going to start processing ballots?
By the end of this week.
Okay. Thank you. I don't see, oh, Supervisor Flores was, had his light on. I don't see any of your lights on, so I appreciate your help. Thank you. Now, that takes us, I believe, to item 10, which is a contract, or contract number 24022, Plan, Specifications, and a Notice to Bidders for a Job Order Contract. I'm just going to turn this over to Sal Gomez. You are sitting in today for Josh Champlin. You are, you are the Assistant Public Works Director?
Yes, I am, for transportation.
Welcome.
Thank you. Like you said, this is Excuse me. We're going to have a brief presentation. So this is for contract number 24022, Plans, Specifications, and Notice to Bidders for Job Order Contract. So this project is for a job order contract, a JOC, is competitively bid, firm fixed price indefinitely, I'm sorry, firm fixed price and definite quantity contract. The JOC is placed with the, with a contractor for repairs, alterations, maintenance, rehabilitation, construction, et cetera, roadways or other road-related structures and facilities. This project is exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, per Section 15301 of the state SEQA guidelines. So the bid opening is Friday, Friday, February 23rd, 2024, at 11:00 AM at the Public Services Building, 2700 M Street, here in Bakersfield, first floor, Public Meeting Room. So the JOC is to make repairs to the following roadways. Sierra Highway, I mean Sierra Way, damage occurred in winter 2023. Breckenridge Road, damage occurred in winter 2023, and Round Mountain Road, damage occurred during the tropical storm Hillary, summer 2023 through winter 2023. We're going to have a small video of what it looks today. This is Sierra Highway. This was a complete road failure, and our crews have been doing everything to keep this cohort going. But I want to make it clear that this roadway is currently close to the public and, and to emergency. As you can see from this slide, it is, currently has about 110 CFS, and it's not very stable. So it is, I want to make it clear that this roadway is currently close to the public and to emergency. Next slide. So this is, and also want to say, this failure occurred on Sierra Highway was, it's approximately 4,500 feet north of Highway 178. So this next one is Breckenridge Road. This was also a complete failure, and as you can see, we had a rockslide, and the, the road is also completely closed to the public and to emergency. I've got the next slide. So this is looking west, and this location of this one is approximately 20 miles east of Comanche Drive. The next slide. This is another view of it, and so we're going to, this JOC is to repair to pre-disaster conditions. The next slide. The next one is Round Mountain Road. Round Mountain Road, this location, it's approximately four miles east of China Gray Loop, and, go ahead, is this a slide, video? So this is, it's a video of, this was back in May. We currently have this road open to the public. It's only a one lane, so we have a temporary traffic signal. So this roadway is open to the public and emergency. And this is what we have done back when it first happened, we dropped some rock to stabilize the shoulder. So staff recommendation is that your board make findings that this project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Qualities Act, per Section 15301 of the SEQA guidelines. Approve the plans and specifications and authorize the Public Works Department to publish the Notice to Bidders in a newspaper of general circulation pursuant with Section 20392 of the Public Contracts Code. Bid opening date is to be February, Friday, February 23rd, 2024, at 11:00 AM at 2700 M Street in Bakersfield. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Now, is there anyone here that would like to speak to this item? Thank you for patiently waiting.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. My name is Carla Thorne, and I'm here to represent the people whose 1,174 signatures are on the petition that I have submitted to you today. Eleven months ago, a section of our main road, Sierra Way, washed out due to the flooding event winter of 2023. We need this vital roadway open for so many reasons. Although we do understand the difficulties repairing a roadway over the South Fork, we know it is not impossible. I urge you to move forward as quickly as possible to repair and reopen this vital piece of highway. Since the road closure, we have been affected by longer commute times, twice the gas to get to our destinations within the valley. In addition, we have safety concerns. When the next fire happens, we will have major safety issues trying to get to a safe place. During fire season, there are thousands of tourists camping on the Upper Kern River. How will these tourists get out? How will that many people be able to safely be escorted around just one side of the lake? It will be impossible. What if a fire broke out on the west side of the lake? All of these scenarios have catastrophic endings. Sierra Way, excuse me, Sierra Way has been the preferred route for most larger trucks to utilize around the lake to avoid the daily traffic commuters and the tighter turns. Larger, larger delivery trucks entering our valley from the LA area will choose to go over Walker Pass, thus utilizing Sierra Way for convenience and safety. Some of these truckers, to name a few, are Kern County's transfer station trucks, grocery trucks, construction trucks, propane, aviation fuel, and more. With, with the crossing, with the closing of the Kern Valley landfill and the replacement of the transfer station, the county had the option of moving the facility to a no location or keeping it at its current location. The county determined it would be best to keep it where it was. They did not want the large transfer station trucks traveling around the lake as their destination is Ridgecrest. How is it that this is no longer important? Currently, with the closure of Sierra Way, all these large gross-weight vehicles are now intermingled with daily commuter traffic. Many of these vehicles are too large to use the turnouts and are slower moving, which causes backups and delays. These trucks now pass by school bus stops and travel through our walkable communities. We have been fortunate so far that no serious incident has occurred. We are concerned that if there were to be a major incident, the traffic would not be manageable. Even if traffic could be diverted or turned around, there's nowhere to go. Numerous road projects have recently been completed in Bakersfield, and we're feeling ignored. We're not asking for a roadway that connects one freeway to another, but rather, we're demanding your attention to the only road we have, the road that encircles Lake Isabella. This is our one and only road. This is our one and only road. We have only two ways in and out of the valley and even these are commonly affected by weather, rocks, and mudslides. Eleven months is a very long time to have had to wait. It has been stated that FEMA would only provide financial resources to bring Sierra Way back to its original pre-flood condition. This makes no sense as it was originally constructed 70 years ago and everything has changed. The course of the river has changed. The amount of traffic has changed. The type of traffic has changed. We need this addressed now as a permanent temporary fix, quote unquote, but we also need to begin the planning for a permanent solution. If Kern County is unable to accomplish this feat financially or otherwise, then it's time to investigate other solid options, federal or state money, if pursued by an advocate of our situation. Combined with solid information and persistence, will work. We do not feel that our options are being failed, we do not feel that all of our options are fairly being explored. Although we appreciate this effort to get us a temporary permanent repair, we are asking that the county assertively find other resources to begin and complete a permanent roadway. We feel like this project has and perhaps will be put on the back burner if we're not assertive in our requests. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item? Would you, staff, like to respond to anything you just heard?
I want to thank you for your comments. Yes, we are working on this temporary fix, but we are, you know, we are working on a permanent solution. We are looking at bridge replacement and we currently have a consultant to, that's looking at hydrology studies and we will have a plan soon to be able to tell you guys what the permanent solution will be. Thank you.
Interestingly, we had a email from an employee who's moving just today. I think we got the email and he said, and I don't remember who said this, that the difficult they do immediately, we can do immediately, the impossible takes a little bit longer. And that's precisely what the Public Works Department, kind of your motto. So I think they'll get this done, although it's going to take some time and it's going to take a lot of money. Anyway, that's item 10. Would anyone like to make a motion on the staff's recommendation? I'm sorry. Supervisor Peters, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Couch. So a couple of things. I wanted to see if you would just address the FEMA issue that they brought up real quickly and just kind of explain a little bit more about how that funding works.
Supervisor Peters through the chair. Yes, that is correct. FEMA will only fund if we replace pre-disaster conditions. We cannot make any improvements, but it will be this, the solution that we're going to have as a temporary will be open, just like it was before disaster conditions.
I appreciate that and I just wanted to make that distinction out there because I think people think that that means that's the only funding available for this and that's not the case. This is just a pot of funding that has been made federally available that we're trying to go after to get that back open and get this in place. Doesn't mean that we can't pursue other avenues after that, but I know time's of the essence in getting this open. And I think we're looking at all the options and one of the challenges, I know, again, it's frustrating that it takes a while to get this stuff done, but how many agencies are involved in opening this up that we have to check with when we do SEQA, when we do all these requirements that have been placed on us?
So we have various stakeholders, including Fish and Wildlife, Audubon, private landowners, Kern River Preserve, Native Americans. So we have a lot of stakeholders that we've got to go through.
And even the state of California, from what I understand, has put up some roadblocks for us as far as, you know, when we're trying to stabilize that area, they kept us from doing some of the stuff that would have been able to do that a little bit quicker. Is that correct?
Correct. We had to go through the Water Board and the Army Corps of Engineers when we first, so our first attempt to open this road, we were not allowed to use concrete slurry. So we used just pipe culverts and rock, but that failed. So now this is our second attempt to, now we're going to be using slurry. So the Water Board allowed us to use concrete slurry now that they saw that it failed.
I appreciate it and that's just another distinction I wanted to make because the frustration that people feel with dealing with the local government, the local government feels that same frustration dealing with the guys up above us. So I promise this isn't a project at all that's being put on the back burner. It hasn't been forgotten. This is a huge priority. And I know Sal and Alex and everybody over at Public Works is taking this very seriously. I know our CIO's office and the rest of our board members are all interested in finding ways to make this happen and we're going to keep working on it.
You bet. We do not have a motion yet though, do we?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Your motion in a second. Please cast your votes.
My microphone is off. The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Perez.
Thank you. That takes us to the end of the afternoon agenda. You just need a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, February 27th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m.
So moved.
Without objection, we're adjourned. Thank you.